All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, we'd like to start our planning commission meeting. It is December 8th and it's six o'clock. Um, let's see here, can we get a pledge allegiance? We all put our hands over our hearts and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America.
And to the free public.
Which is one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all. Um, can we get a roll call of members, please?
Good evening, Commissioner Batista.
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Right next.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza.
Here.
Commission Chair Abrego.
Here.
Okay, first item is, uh, minutes. Approval of the minute for November 10th of 2020. Can we get a review and approval of the minute?
I motion to approve.
That Commissioner Gutierrez?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, did Commissioner Gutierrez, did he first?
Yes, I first did and Sparza seconded.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego.
Yes. Any public comments to report?
No public comments.
Okay, looks like we're on old business. Um, continuing the public hearing. Item number two is the general plan amendment number 20 dash 2. A request by Nima Golshani to change the land use designation of the general plan used map from Central Business District to mixed-use commercial on 16675-16683 Paramount Boulevard in the general commercial zone.
Uh, yes, Chair Abrego, I apologize. I need to read a special notice. Um, pursuant to executive order number N dash 29 dash 20 executed by the Governor of California on March 17th, 2020, and as a response to mitigating the spread of coronavirus known as COVID-19, the regular meeting of the planning commission scheduled for Tuesday, December 8th, 2020 at 6:00 PM will allow members of the public to participate and address the commission during the open session of the meeting via teleconference only. Uh, thank you. And if we could, um, maybe identify yourself when you make a motion, that would help Valerie out a little bit. Thank you. And looking at, um, the next two items, general plan amendment 20 dash 20 and zone change uh, number 230, these were continued from your meeting in November, and these are related to a mixed-use, uh, senior assisted slash independent living facility, and this is at the northwest corner of Paramount Boulevard and 70th Street. You'll also, uh, as a development review board, review the design of the project later this evening. So I'm gonna go ahead and give you the presentation, um, for the general plan amendment first, and, um, you can follow along with your slides.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, give me just a minute to pull the presentation up here. Okay, so, uh, moving to the second slide on background. This application is a request for a general plan amendment from Central Business District to mixed-use commercial and senior assisted slash independent living facility. As I mentioned, the project is located at the northwest corner of Paramount Boulevard and 70th Street. The site is currently occupied by a bar and an auto repair business. This project also includes a zone change, as I mentioned, and a development review application. And moving on to the next slide. This is, uh, an aerial of the property, and the project site is highlighted in purple. The next slide shows a look at the properties, looking, uh, from Paramount Boulevard in a westerly direction. And looking at the project description, the general plan amendment will allow for the development of a senior housing complex with retail suites on the bottom floor. The building would have three floors and two small retail suites, as I mentioned, on the bottom floor. The residential units would be located on the second and third floors. There would be seven units on each of the second and third floors, and 12 of the units would be for assisted care and two units would be for independent living. Moving on to the next slide, project description. There will be four units on each floor that will contain three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and three units on each of the second and third floor that will contain four bedrooms with three bathrooms. Each unit will have a shared kitchen and a living room. The units will range in size from about 1,000 square feet up to 1,155 square feet. Next slide, uh, project description. One of the ground floor retail suites will contain 900 square feet, while the second suite will contain 1,100 square feet. 27 parking places will be provided on the ground floor. The project will also contain, on the second and third floors, an exercise room, an activity room, a kitchen, a common dining area, and a rooftop sun deck. Next slide, project description. The facility will have a total of 48 employees with an average of 15 people per shift. Employees will include housekeepers, caregivers, medical technicians, cooks, managers, nurses, and security. The next slide shows the existing general plan land use designation, and this designation is Central Business District. The next slide shows the proposed land use designation, and this again is for mixed-use commercial and senior assisted slash independent living facility. The next slide, which shows the elevation, and I will go over this in more detail during the development review board meeting. And the next slide shows the site plan. Uh, you can see Paramount Boulevard on the right, 70th Street on the bottom, and I'll go into a little more detail during the development review board meeting on this, on the site plan also. Looking at the environmental analysis, an outside consultant prepared an initial study, and that initial study found that the project would not produce negative impacts, and so a mitigated negative declaration is recommended. In summary, the general plan amendment will allow for the development of a senior housing complex for which there is a growing need. The city will be contributing $300,000 from our low-to-moderate income housing fund to the project, and thus two of the units will be restricted as affordable. The project location is near the library, the civic center gardens, and shopping, making the site suitable for senior living. And finally, the project will eliminate blighted conditions at the southern entrance to the And, uh, recommended action, it's recommended that the planning commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program, and that you approve resolution number PC 20 dash 20 colon 038, recommending that the city council adopt a resolution to change the land use designation on the general plan land use map from Central Business District to mixed-use commercial and senior assisted independent living facility at 16675 to 16683 Paramount Boulevard. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our commissioners?
Uh, this is, uh, Weisenberger. Uh, John, I've got a question, um, about the 27 parking spaces. Is that, uh, you think that's gonna be adequate for a facility, uh, with all these, uh, possible residents here?
Yes, we believe this will be adequate. Um, as I mentioned, um, at anyone, on anyone's shift, there will only be 15 employees, and the majority of the tenants of the facility, um, will require assistance, so they will not be driving, will not have cars that they will need to park. So I, we believe that the 15 parking places for the staff and then, um, several for the retail, the two retail suites, we believe that the 27 will be sufficient.
Okay, I, you know, um, I'm not that familiar with, uh, those type of, uh, facilities, but, um, according to my numbers here, uh, it looks like there could be as many as 20, 24 residents on each floor. And, um, there are two floors, and that adds up to 20, uh, 48 residents. And, um, but I know, yeah, I guess with assisted living, not many of those folks would probably be driving, and would probably wouldn't have a car, like, I suppose, and I'm not that familiar with those types of setups.
Yes.
I should have looked into that.
Sure, and talking with the applicant and the environmental consultant, the applicant does have experience with other assisted living facilities, and the majority of the residents in an assisted living facility do not have cars. Uh, as I mentioned, there will be independent, two independent units, so there's the potential that those residents would have automobiles. Um, but again, the majority will not, as they require assistance.
Okay, very good. Thank you, John.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Batista. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I have a question, um, the request by, uh, Nima Golshani, has this either person or company, have they done, um, similar projects in the city before?
They've done, uh, similar projects in Los Angeles. Uh, so they are familiar with operating an assisted living facility.
And we're looking, um, if things get passed, what is the projection for completion for dates?
Oh, well, um, let's see, we would go to city council next, uh, for the zone change on the general plan amendment. They would submit their plans to plan check, um, and then, uh, I would guess that might take several months to get the plans approved, going back and forth with corrections, and then, you know, maybe six months of construction, so maybe within a year.
Any other questions?
That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Batista. Um, this is Commissioner, Chair Abrego, I have a question. Um, so I just noticed that Paramount Boulevard doesn't have a crosswalk in that area, just, I don't know, would this be a public safety, uh, commission question? But will they need to build a crosswalk there if someone needs to attend the medical building across the street, or will they have all the services within that building?
No, they would go offsite for medical appointments, um, and, yes.
Okay, so I guess we need to probably look into, see if a crosswalk will be needed for that, crossing the Paramount Boulevard into that medical building across the street, or if they need to go, um, to the pharmacy in the corner?
Yes, I'll definitely talk with our Public Works Department about that.
Okay, Public Works, right.
Right. The city engineer.
That's all I have. All right, that's all the questions I have.
Commissioner, this Commissioner, I have another question. This, um, property actually sort of corners Long Beach, correct?
It does, right.
So it would be, would we have to talk to the city of Long Beach as well?
The applicant will have to, um, they'll go through a plan check here, will be quote-unquote "the lead agency," they'll go through a plan check here, and, um, I gave an example in the staff report of another project that bordered Long Beach, and it was a residential project. We, again, acted as the quote-unquote "lead agency," and, um, Long Beach basically just gave it a blessing after we approved it.
And what I mean about Long Beach is regarding to what Chair Abrego said, which was maybe a, uh, an additional traffic light or a crosslight of some sort?
Sure, if there's a need for a crosswalk there and it's in the city of Long Beach, we'll definitely talk with the city of Long Beach about that.
Okay, then, thank you.
All right, you guys, um, this is a public hearing, so we'll need to, a motion to close the public hearing?
Commissioner, Commissioner Chair Abrego, I do have, um, I do have two written comments I want to read in to the public hearing.
That is correct.
Okay.
We need to hear testimony of whether, uh, we have anyone in favor or opposed.
Yes, uh, we have two in favor. The first one is from the applicant. It's about a page and a half, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna read it into the record.
Okay.
Hello, hello, everyone, my name is Nima Golshani, and I am here today representing the ownership group of the project proposed at 16675 to A3 Paramount Boulevard in Paramount. I want to first thank you for this opportunity and extend my well wishes to everyone during this time. I have been involved with several building projects, and more recently with the development of a number of senior living facilities. What we are proposing today is a three-story, 14-unit elder care facility. We are particularly proud of this proposed project because we feel that it serves an important need for this community and the city as a whole, and will create numerous benefits for many. Today, I will share some of the reasons we feel that the project serves the needs of the community and some of the positive impacts smaller-scale senior living facilities have. A recent Harvard study found that over 50% of US households are headed by someone over age 50, above age 50, which indicates a coming wave of demand for living solutions for seniors. Furthermore, the study found that nearly one-third of households age 65 or older spend at least 30% of their income on housing, and more than half of that total pay over 50%. This finding exemplifies the fact that a significant portion of seniors are overstretched financially, living in homes that may be too spacious, too expensive, or don't provide for their health needs. On top of all this, California and Los Angeles in particular is in the midst of a housing affordability crisis that has hit seniors especially hard. In total, these trends combine to create a situation in which assisted living facilities are not just helpful, they are critically needed. Senior assisted living facilities are vital and provide innumerable benefits to communities, not only for the seniors who call the facilities home, but also for their extended family members and those who are employed at them. For the residents, assisted living facilities give seniors who can no longer fully care for themselves a place to live that feels like home. In particular, it provides an alternative option for the many seniors who need some degree of care but who do not wish to live in large scale, and oftentimes in personal nursing homes far away from their families. This perfect balance between care and independence provides security for the seniors who know they will receive the personalized care they need while also providing a sense of community among the neighborhood they live with. And I'm on to the second page, just, uh, three more paragraphs. For the residents' family members, these facilities are Godsend, allowing them the peace of mind that comes with knowing that their loved one is receiving personalized care in a safe, inviting environment. They also know for the seniors and their loved ones to visit with each other on terms that work for people, everyone involved. Finally, for many nurses and caregivers, senior assisted living facilities provide stable, rewarding careers that allow them to utilize their high skill outside a traditional healthcare setting. For the many caregivers who do not want to work in the high-stress atmosphere of a hospital, for instance, a career in senior assisted care is valuable and rewarding. Our project will create 40 jo, 48 jobs directly onsite. Last paragraph, additionally, we will be instituting a strict COVID-related safety protocol onsite at all times in order to protect our residents and the resident staff and the community, as well as incorporate robust filtration systems in the development of the building. The onsite security will also ensure that health protocols are strictly followed. And then, the second comment that we have, uh, is from, uh, his name is Joe Seeling, and he says, "Hello, Mr. Abrego. I am the owner of 6968 and 6974 Eureka Avenue, Long Beach, California, 90805. I am in full support of the planned senior assisted living facility at 16675 Paramount Boulevard. The current use of the location as a bar has caused many problems in the neighborhood, parking problems, intoxicated people wandering into my complex, and of course, the shootings in the last years. My only concern is if, is that if you are planning to include enough visitor parking for a three-story structure, and if parking needs exceed your expectations, do you have a plan to relieve the overflow parking from your facility from the surrounding residential area with permitting, with permitted parking regulations on Eureka Avenue in Long Beach? Thank you for your time and attention in addressing my concerns." And that's, that's the final comment that we have in favor, and we have nothing opposed.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so can I get a motion to close?
This is Commissioner Batista. I have one last question.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Yeah, my question is, is the city gonna have, um, a say in the application process? And what I'm going into specifically is, um, is there gonna be a percentage of the units that may have priority for our Paramount community?
No, there, there, there's not, there is nothing that is set up that would guarantee a certain percentage go to Paramount residents.
Okay. Thank you. No problem.
Okay, going back to our public hearing, amendment number 20 dash 2, can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
This is Weisenberger. I saw move. This is Commissioner Batista. I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego.
Yes. Next is adopt them and mitigate negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program relative to general plan amendment 20 dash 2. Can I get a motion to adopt?
This is Commissioner Batista. I'll move to motion.
Thank you. I get a second.
This is Commissioner Gutierrez. I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Thank you, Gutierrez. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego.
Yeah. Okay, the next item is the zone change number 230.
Commissioner Chair Abrego, we need a motion to approve.
Oh, yeah, okay, the next page, correct?
Yes, second page.
Excuse me. Oh, sorry, guys. All right, can I get a motion to approve resolution number PC 20038?
Uh, this is Weisen, this is Weisenberger. I'm not exactly sure what we're doing here.
Okay, we need a motion to approve a request by Nima Golshani to change the land use designation on the general plan used map Central Business District to mixed-use commercial and senior assisted independent living facility on the 16675 dash 16683 Paramount Boulevard in the C3 general commercial zone. We're making a motion to approve this change.
This is Commissioner Gutierrez. I'm motion to approve. Um, Weisenberger, I think we're, the other motion was to close the public hearing.
Oh, that was, okay, that was.
I apologize, Weisenberger. It's my, I missed this one here, so I was moving on to the next item. I apologize.
Okay, 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 I understand, I understand. Thank you, thank you, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
This is Sparza. I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego.
Yes. All right, next item, zone change number 230. A request by Nima Golshani to change the official zoning map of the city of Paramount from C3 general commercial to planned development with performance standards mixed-use commercial and senior assisted independent living facility at the 16675-16683 Paramount Boulevard in the C3 general commercial zone.
Uh, yes, Chairman, uh, Chair, Chair Abrego, give me just a minute, we're pulling up the presentation.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, looking at the second slide, the request, this item is the second part of this senior project, and it is a request for a zone change from general commercial to PDPS planned development with performance standards, mixed-use commercial and senior-assisted independent living facility. The site contains approximately 13,500 square feet, and it's occupied, as I mentioned in the last presentation, by a bar and an auto repair business. The next slide shows again the aerial with the property highlighted in purple. Next slide, we look at the shot of the front of the property from Paramount Boulevard. Next slide is the existing zoning, and this slide shows that the existing zoning is general commercial or C3. Next slide, proposed zoning. This slide shows the proposed zoning, and this recommendation is mixed-use commercial and senior assisted independent living facility. Moving to the next slide, which is land use, this shows the existing land use, which is And then, moving on to the next slide, the general plan, this slide shows the current general plan land use designation as Central Business District. And we are recommending that you approve resolution 20037, recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance to change the official zoning map from C3 to PDPS mixed-use commercial and senior assisted independent living facility at 16675 to 16683 Paramount Boulevard. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our commissioners?
No.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so can I get a motion to close this public hearing? Or, excuse me, are those, are any in favor, John, or opposed of this zone change?
No, no comments in favor or opposed.
Okay, thank you. Now can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'm motion to close the public hearing.
This is Weisenberger.
Was it Weisenberg or Batista? Okay.
Uh, go with, uh, Weisenberger.
Weisenberger?
Weisenberger.
Okay, gotcha. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza.
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego.
Yes. Okay, the next item is to, or the next is to, um, adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20037, recommending that the city council approve the zone change number 230, adopting an ordinance changing the official zoning map of the city of Paramount from C3 general commercial to PDPS planned development with performance standards mixed-use commercial and senior assisted independent living facility at 16675-16683 Paramount Boulevard in the C3 general commercial zone in the city of Paramount. Can I get a motion to adopt this planning commission resolution PC 20037?
This is Commissioner Gutierrez. I'm motion to approve.
Sparza will second it.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger.
Yes.
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Brago?
Yes. Okay, we move on to new business. Conditional use permit number 895, a request from Claudia Mercado Alegría Imports Incorporated. It's a Fiesta Distribution operating a wholesale clothing and accessories business at 15958 Downey Avenue in the M1 light manufacturing zone.
Yes, Chair Brago and Commissioners, this item and the next item are for where, small warehouse uses, and John King will give you the details on conditional use permit 895.
Thank you, John Carver, and thank you Commissioners, Commission Chair Brago and Commissioners. This report and presentation was put together by planning intern Erica Barbero, who is diligently taking her finals for her college courses this evening, so I'll be subbing in for her. And so, you're going through the slides. And again, to operate a wholesale clothing business and accessories business, 15958 Downey, and it's in the M1 zone, it's within what's called the KIC Business Park. And this particular warehouse suite is 10,560 square feet. The applicant would operate from 9:30 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, Mondays through Fridays, and they would have four employees on site, up to four employees at a time. The next slide shows, is a glimpse of some of the products that they sell, so they cater to children mostly for events. You see a number of outfits for, for boys and girls, and very colorful. Onto the next slide is the aerial view, and you'll see the project is off Downey, just south of, says Willbar, should be Alondra, and it's highlighted in yellow. The suite is in a purple color, so it's in that front building, so if you're looking off of Downey, it's in the front right building. And here's, the next slide is a, is a view off of Downey of the business park, and you can see it's maintained in good condition, the, you can see the nice new asphalt on the driveway. Um, there's, the next slide is a view of the suite itself, on the left is a photo of the entry door. You may remember, or you may have read the report and seen that there's a condition to bring the sign into compliance with the sign regulations. The tenant is aware and has no problem with that, and they're gonna take care of it shortly. There's a truck well on the right photo. The next slide is a site plan, so just another view of where, where it is. So it fits right in, there's a, there's a floor plan included, there's a slide of the floor plan, so mostly warehouse. And with that, we recommend approval, we see it's, it fits in with the rest of the, of the suites, and would not have a negative impact on, on neighbors. So we recommend you adopt resolution PC 20039. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, this is, or 895, you said, right?
895, yes.
895.
Alright, this is, this is a public hearing, do we have anyone that's in favor or opposed?
No comments in favor or opposed.
Thank you, John. Alright, so can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
Uh, this is Sparza, I make a motion to close the public hearing on conditional use permit number 895.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
This is Commissioner Bautista, I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Brago?
Yes. Next is, motion to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20039, approving request by Alegría Imports, Inc., Fiesta Distribution to operate the wholesale clothing. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution number?
This is Commissioner Gutierrez, I'm motion to approve.
Sparza will second it.
Thank you, roll call please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Brago?
Yes. Okay, next one is conditional use permit number 896, a request by Jung Woo Woo DBA Enterprises to operate a household goods distribution business at 7619 Somerset Boulevard in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone.
Yes, Commission Chair Brago and Commissioners, I'll be giving you this report. This is another request for a small warehouse, and this would be to operate a household goods distribution business at 7619 Somerset Boulevard. This property is located in the heavy manufacturing zone. The whole entire site contains about 8.59 acres, and the suite is a little bit more than 8,200 square feet. The applicant would have one employee, and the business would operate from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday to Fridays. The business maintains a 14-foot, 14-foot box truck and a three-quarter ton delivery van. And there would be approximately three outgoing shipments per day. The slide, the aerial slide shows the entire project outlined in red on the north side of Somerset Boulevard. And the suite that the applicant proposes to operate out of is highlighted in blue. Looking at the site plan, we've got the area where the suite is located and the parking. And looking at the site itself, this is looking in a northerly direction. And the next slide shows a view of the exterior. And I, I need to add one condition that came up after the report was written and submitted to you. The applicant does park the, or intends to park the 14-foot box truck in the truck well, and we don't have any issue with that at all. And we're recommending that you approve resolution number PC 20040, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our commissioners? Nope. No, okay. Um, this is a public hearing, so do we have anyone, John, that's in favor or opposed?
Uh, no one in favor or opposed.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to close this public hearing?
This is Weisenberger, I move, we close the hearing?
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll second it.
Thank you, roll call please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Brago?
Yes. Okay, now is a motion in order to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20040, approving a request by Jung Woo Woo DBA Enterprises to operate a household goods distribution business on Somerset Boulevard. Can I get a motion to adopt this planning commission resolution number PC 20040?
This is Commissioner Gutierrez, I'm motion to approve.
Thank you.
Sparza will second it.
Thank you Sparza. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Brago?
Yes. Next item on the list is number six, conditioning use permit number 897, a request by Carlos Gomez NNR Tires to expand existing tire accessory installation business at 8046 Rosecrans Avenue in the M1 light manufacturing.
Uh, yes, Commission Chair Brago, this is a request from an existing tire and tire accessory installation business on the south side of Somerset, I'm sorry, on the south side of Rosecrans Avenue, to expand into a building that is located just almost adjacent to it. And John King will give the details on this.
Thank you, John Carver, and Commissioners, as with the previous U P that I helped present, this was prepared by somebody else, this one was prepared, the report and presentation, they were prepared by, prepared by planning intern Christian Santana, who is assisting with the audiovisual this evening. So I'll, I'll try my best here. NNR Tires, and again, to expand their existing business, tires and tire accessory installation on Rosecrans. You'll see, you'll, you'll remember this from the photo here, it is east of Paramount Boulevard, it's west of Orizaba Avenue on the south side, it's in the M1 light manufacturing zone. And they open 8 to 6 Monday to Friday and 8 to 5 on Saturdays. They would extend those same hours to this neighboring suite. So if you're looking at it from, there's a photo, if you're looking at it from across the street, they're now on the left side, they would like to open on the right side as well. They have one employee and have up to 20 customers every week, and they take in a shipment each month for supplies. The next slide is an aerial photograph on the top showing Rosecrans Avenue. You'll see that this area is just to the north of Paramount Park, across from the, the Metro right of way, the future location of the West Santa Ana Light Rail corridor. And so the property is highlighted in blue or bounded by a blue line. Two buildings are in red, again, the existing is on the west side, the east side, the smaller building, and they would expand to the larger building. And as you can see, there are housing units to the south on the same property. It's a, it's a mixed-use property, we're talking about mixed-use earlier, vertical mixed-use, this is horizontal mixed-use, and there have been no complaints, we checked with code enforcement, there have been no complaints about the business to the neighbors, so they, they work together very compatibly, very compatible. The next slide is a site plan, so it looks like the same as what you saw before. These business suites are at the front, the residential's in the back, and there is designated parking for the business. And no complaints, again, from the residents about any commercial issues. We've included a floor plan, and another, it's the same photo you saw. There is one condition, special condition about the signs, I guess they're a little damaged, need a little care. So that will be addressed, the business owner has no problems with that. There's also a condition for no outdoor storage, so that means no outdoor displays of the, of rims, hubcaps. Oh, and on that slide and the next, you'll see there's a trash bin that's visible from the street, so there's a condition, the, the business owner understands the trash bin has to be hidden from public view, and they'll take care of that. There's a photo of the inside of the existing suite. It used to be, most recently, a, some type of apparel business, they were doing some sewing inside of there. And that's it, so we recommend approval, approve, to approve resolution PC 2041, and I am happy to answer any questions. Oh, by the way, and I'd like to include one other condition that came up regarding the outside of the building, if we could, don't mind adding that, we're suggesting that you include, to touch up the exterior of the building with a fresh coat of paint. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Okay, any questions from our commissioners?
This is Commissioner Gutierrez, I do have one question for John. You said that one of the conditional uses is that they're gonna not make the trash enclosure visible, are they relocating the trash bin?
They are, we gave them a number of options, in the end, it's more the results, you know, just, just not make it visible. So the more intense option is to build a full enclosure. Then we also gave them, well, if, due to space limitations, you know, it is an old property, and they may not be able to do that very well, maybe build a little screen wall, just whatever it takes, and we never want to see that, that bin, no matter what.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions? Okay. Alright, this is a public hearing, do we have anyone that's in favor or opposed?
No one in favor or opposed.
Thank you, John. Alright, can I get a motion to close this public hearing for condition use permit number 897?
Commissioner Gutierrez, I'm motion to.
Commissioner Bautista.
Okay. You have a first, and who was the second, was that you, Bautista?
Oh, yes, I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Brago?
Yes. Next is the motion to adopt the planning commission resolution number PC 20041, approving a request by Carlos Gomez NNR Tires to expand existing tire and tire accessory installation business at the 8046 Rosecrans Avenue in the M1 light manufacturing zone, including adding up, adding a touch-up on the paint of the facial of the building. Can I get a, a motion to adopt this resolution?
This is Bautista. I'm motion to adopt.
Thank you, Bautista, and we, did I have a second with Weisenberger?
Yes, Weisenberger, second.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Bautista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Brago?
Yes. The next item, I'm gonna accuse myself, and I'll let Ernie Sparza, the co-chair, take on from here, and I'll return once we reach the oral report.
Okay, this is Sparza. On conditional is number seven, the conditional use permit number 899, and that's a request by Alta Air Paramount L Ls to install and utilize two temporary modular office structures for up to three years at 14700 Downey Avenue in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Staff report.
Yes, Commission Vice Chair Sparza and Commissioners, I'll be giving you this report. So, this is a request to install and utilize two temporary modular office structures for up to three years, and this is at 14700 Downey Avenue in the heavy manufacturing zone. The office structures are proposed to be located at the northwest corner of the refinery on an unused parking lot. Each structure measures 64 feet by 72 feet and 12 feet in height. And these temporary modular office structures are in connection with a proposed project to completely eliminate petroleum refining at the refinery. And you'll be looking at that project probably in March or April of next year, and that's a project to make jet fuel, diesel fuel, and gasoline from animal fat and vegetable oil. So again, these two structures would be utilized as part of that project. Here's a look at the, next slide is the aerial view, and you can see the refinery property is highlighted in an orangish color, and the location of the proposed modular office structures are highlighted in red. Here's a look from Downey Avenue at the facility. And then I'll look at Contreras in the area where the temporary office structures are proposed. Next slide is a site plan, and you can see Downey Avenue is on the right, Contreras is on the top, and the proposed office structures are highlighted in blue. And I'll look at a floor plan on the next slide. And I'll look at a floor plan on the next slide. And we're recommending that you approve conditional use permit eight ninety-nine, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any other Commissioners have any questions regarding this project? No. Okay, it's, we opened the public hearing, and we'll hear just in the following order, those in favor, those opposed, John?
No comments in favor or opposed.
And there's no rebuttal by the applicant, so I need a motion to close the public hearing, please.
This is Weisenberger, I will move to close the hearing.
This is Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll second the motion to close the public hearing.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Asparza?
Yes.
Second is the, is the motion order, and that's read by title only, and adopt the planning commission resolution number PC twenty oh four three, approving a request by Alta Air Paramount LLC to install and utilize two temporary modular office structures for up to three years at one four seven hundred Downey Avenue in the M two heavy manufacturing zone. Can I have a motion, please?
This is Weisenberger, I will move to approve.
I need a second.
This is Batista, I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Batista?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Asparza?
Yes.
Okay, I'll hand it over to Abrego.
Thank you, Asparza. Report, oral report? John?
Yes, the city council will have their December meeting next week, so I don't have anything to report to you, I will bring you news of their meeting at your January meeting.
Any comments from our city attorney, John?
No comments, Mr. Chair, other than happy holidays to each of you.
Thank you, same to you, and same to everyone else as well. Commissioners, comments from our Commissioners?
No comments from Asparza.
No comment.
Okay, well, I want to wish you guys, everyone, happy holidays and Merry Christmas to everyone. I guess I missed that, any comments from our staff?
Yes, I do have one comment, last month, Commissioner Batista brought up the idea of integrating landscaping into future bus stops in the city, I wanted to let everybody know that the city manager has authorized us to take a look at that, so I'll be able to report to you more news at your meeting in January.
Great.
Thank you, John.
Good, good news. Good news.
Okay, this meeting, planning commission meeting is adjourned, our next meeting will be on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six P M, next year, New Year's.
Okay, the Paramount Development Review Board is called to order, roll call of members, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Batista?
Here.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Here.
Board Chair Asparza?
Here.
Okay, the first item is the minutes, approval of minutes of November tenth, twenty twenty. I have a motion to approve, please.
Commissioner Batista, make a motion to approve those minutes.
Commissioner Abrego, are you there? Oh, boy, sorry, sorry. No, sorry. Could I have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, who was the second on that, was it Abrego or Gutierrez?
It was Abrego.
Abrego, thank you.
Send the conference calls, make it fun.
Yeah, Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Batista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Asparza?
Yes. Any public comments?
No comments.
Okay, new business, item two is DRA number twenty oh one five, and that's a request by Nima Goshani to construct a three-story mixed-use structure that will contain two retail spaces and parking on the ground floor, residential units on the second and third floors, and a sun deck on the roof at one six six seven five, one six six eight three Paramount Boulevard in the C three general commercial zone. Staff, please.
Yes, Board Chair Asparza and Board Members, I'll be giving this report, and this is the, the third part of the senior housing project, and this is looking at the design, so again, it's a request to construct a three-story mixed-use structure, and this is at one six six seven five to one six six eight three Paramount Boulevard. Again, this would be for a senior living facility on the second and third floors, and parking in two small retail suites on the bottom floor. There are three parcels which will be merged in the future, and they contain a total of about thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, and as mentioned earlier, this is in connection with General Plan Amendment twenty dash two and Zone Change Number two thirty, which the Planning Commission has approved. Moving on to the next slide, the request, so again, there will be two retail suites on the bottom floor, one will contain nine hundred square feet, and the second one will contain eleven hundred square feet, there will be twenty-seven parking places on the ground floor, and seven residential units on the second and third floors with two and three-bedroom units ranging from one thousand square feet to one thousand one hundred fifty square feet, and finally, there will be a sun deck on the roof. The next slide is an aerial, and it shows the property at the corner of Paramount and Seventieth, outlined in blue, highlighted in blue. Next slide, and this shows the general plan land use designation that you approved as the Planning Commission earlier. And again, a look at the properties. And here is a slight site, here is a site plan. And here are floor plans of the first and second floor, and you can see on the, if you look on the left of the slide, the, to the right of that are the two retail suites, and then the twenty-seven parking places, and looking at the second floor, we'll have seven units, and on the third floor, we'll also have seven units and a rooftop deck. And here is a look at the elevations, very architecturally attractive with varying roof lines, the use of different materials, and will include stucco exterior, storefront windows, balconies, and awnings. And we're recommending you approve Development Review Application twenty zero one five, I'm happy, oh, and I want to add one condition, when they, when the applicant puts up the construction fence, this is something new that we're doing, we're requiring that decorative screening go up instead of just the, the green screen that you normally see, but this would have images from, that would be provided by the city, so it might be images of city events or city art pieces or something like that, so anyway, that would just be the screening on the, the construction fencing. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, John. Commissioners have any questions on this? Number two zero zero one five?
Nothing from-
This is Commissioner Batista, I just, sorry. Go ahead, Batista.
I have a question, Asparza, for the nine hundred square foot business on the first floor, and the two businesses, since it is a mixed-use, do we already have pre-designated types of businesses that will go here, or is it still going to be open for application process?
Right, so in, in talking with the applicant, they anticipate that they will, they will have two businesses that will, that will directly serve the needs of the residents of the, of the facility, so you might have, say, a hair salon or a dry cleaner, so that's what they anticipate at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, then I'll have to have a motion order to approve a request by Nima to construct a three-story mixed-use structure that will contain two retail spaces and parking on the ground floor, residential units on the second and third floors, and a sun deck on the roof at one six six seven five dash one six six eight three Paramount Boulevard in the C three general commercial zone. Can I have a motion, please?
This is Commissioner Gutierrez, I'll motion to approve.
This is Board Member Abrego, I'll second.
Okay, great. Can I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Batista?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Asparza?
Yes. Reports, any reports? Any comments on three, from board members? Any comments from staff?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Okay, so we'll adjourn the Paramount Development Review Board until January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six P M. And have, happy holidays, everybody. Be safe, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Weisenberger, I'd like to call to order the Paramount Economic Development Board meeting for this month, roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Asparza?
Here.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Batista?
Here.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Here.
Can we move to item one, approval of minutes from November tenth, two thousand twenty? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, is it Asparza?
Batista, I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Asparza?
Yes.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Batista?
Yes.
Board, Board Chair Weisenberger?
Yes.
Okay, if we got any public comments tonight, John?
No public comments, sir.
Okay, no new business, let's move to item number two, the Assistant Directors Monthly Reports, please.
Yes, Board Chair Weisenberger, John King, our Assistant Planning Director, will give you a oral report on the California economy and employment news.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Board Chair Weisenberger and, and Board Members. Unfortunately, as you know, you know, the economy and the employment situation is not the, the best right now, so I'll open up with a little bit of the reality that, just summarizing some news reports that I'm sure you've seen, and there is a little bit of positive news toward the end. So, you know, the economy, which rebounded a bit in July through September, as businesses at that time started reopening from coronavirus-related shutdowns, it's now obviously expanding more slowly as the, the health issue has resurged. So many businesses, especially restaurants and bars, that were, that invested heavily and saw an uptick in customers with the expansion of outdoor seating, including here in Paramount, now they're struggling, so, you know, with the, with the current orders, bringing service inside, takeout-only, delivery service only, it is a struggle, the reality is, it is a struggle, and that's impacting, obviously, the businesses and the, the workforce, the, everyone that they had started to slowly rehire, now they're put on hold. We have, also have colder weather, so with that, you know, even if there were to be outdoor seating, that's, that would have been a challenge anyway, and also, customers are holding back on shopping, traveling, and other, you know, extra expenses like that. So that really is the reality, and then we had the recent disappointing jobs report from the Labor Department. A economist polled had expected a gain of over four hundred thousand jobs and unemployment rate of six point eight percent, but it didn't hit, hit those marks. The jobs report showed the, the economy only regaining two hundred and forty-five thousand jobs, so it was about half as what had been expected, expected, so, I mean, we know what's going on out there, and we're hoping for everything to, to, you know, get better as, as we hear there's a vaccine around the corner. So, a little bit, so some bit of good news, some parts of the economy are recovering, recovering steadily, some manufacturing is rebounding, and for whatever reason, Americans are, nationwide are still buying cars, homes are, you know, there's not, there's a very small inventory of housing, and even housing-related goods like appliances and furniture. Here in town, we've had, well, like everywhere else, we've had a steady sales at, at the Home Depot and Walmart, you know, folks are working on their home projects, so our finance department has confirmed that, that Home Depot is, is up from, from before. Other bright spot is, is related to housing here in our department, although some bigger-ticket projects we may not be seeing, we have seen a steady increase in accessory dwelling units, so folks are converting their garages and building little back homes, we, that, that has not stopped, inspections and approvals are ongoing in that area. So that is one bright spot, and, you know, although there is definitely a housing shortage and housing affordability crisis, one thing is, folks are getting creative with, with these smaller options. So again, hoping for a change, and with that, I'll conclude my report, and if you have any discussion or questions, we're all here.
Okay, thank you, John, that was a good report. Do we have any comments, moving to item number three, comments from our board members? How about comments from staff?
Yes, sir, from staff, the planning department would just like to wish every board member happy holidays.
Okay, very good, thank you, those are my sentiments exactly, too. Well, with that, we will adjourn our meeting to be held next time, January thirteenth, at two thousand twenty-one, at six P M, thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, guys.